Good evening, City of Twintfort Planning Commission meeting for Monday, June 27, 2022. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here ma'am.
Mr. Kleinman? Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Here.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We begin this evening with our work session. The first item on the agenda is the revised site plan for the drive-through at Starbucks, 2728 East Aurora Road. If the applicant could please come forward, name an address and overview of what you're looking for this evening, please.
Hi, good evening. Tyler Reister, 75 Edgerton Road, Akron, Ohio. And I'm joined by representation from Starbucks and by the landowner.
Good evening, my name is Jen Murray. My address is 143 Wall Creek Drive in Columbus, Ohio.
Good evening, my name is Mike O'Shannaro. I've been the property owner there since about 2015, I'm sorry, 2005, the years go by too quick. I was the original developer of the, when I bought the building from Rick Siriow, and we redeveloped it into the Starbucks, the Verizon and FedEx. And my address, I'm sorry, is 5260 River Trail, Lynnmerce, Ohio.
Thank you.
Yes, and I forgot to mention, I'm with Kim Lee Horn, who's a consultant partner on this project, I'm a civil engineer. So, we're here tonight to hopefully address some of the concerns that were raised in the staff report and answer any questions. If it's helpful, I think Jen could help explain kind of the purpose of the project, is that helpful?
Most definitely.
All right, well, we were approached, how long ago was it there?
About six months.
Six months ago by Larry.
Larry Finch.
Larry Finch with the city regarding the traffic at the drive-through backing up onto the street. And we had already been having some discussions about extending, reconfiguring our drive-through so that it was faster and just so that it was more operationally efficient for us. So, that prompted us to bring in Kim Lee Horn and Tyler to create a site plan and do a study, which is why we're here today. So, we do know from our drive-through operations, our most effective and efficient operations are at a minimum of eight cars stack. That means eight cars from the drive-through order point to the window. That allows time for our partners, our baristas, to create the order, create the custom beverage and get that ready to hand off. And by extending that stack, we can actually improve the time, improve the efficiency and cut the time at the window so that we're moving cars faster through the queue. That's what brings us here today.
So, unless there's any questions at this point, I think I can start to address maybe some of the concerns in the report, is that helpful?
Yeah, please go ahead and see what you can do to resolve what, at least I see are numerous issues.
Sure. Okay, the first topic that I think is worth discussing is with reference to the easement that is there for the PNC Bank. Currently, in the current configuration, that easement is impacted by the eighth car in the queue. Under the proposed configuration, that easement impact is improved and would only be impacted when 11 or 12 cars are in the queue. So, this project intends to improve the functionality of that easement for the neighboring business. That neighboring business, PNC Bank, does have access from the west, from Church Street, to both of its parking facilities and its drive-through. And their drive-through exit is the only portion of their parcel that is using that easement as its single dedicated point of access. And currently, that exit easement space would only be impacted at a very, very large queue in the current configuration. In the future configuration, it would be even larger by three to five cars more. Mike here, the landowner, has some comments on his interactions with neighboring parcels.
The fact of the matter is, we bought the property, as I mentioned, and I think in 2005, developed in 2006. As I stand here today, I have never once received a phone call, letter, or any question from my neighboring property owner about the easement. The easement is simply an ingress egress easement and also allows the users of the bank to park on their lot. To be very honest with you, I don't think that's ever been exercised because there's plenty of parking on the bank lot, but we've never restricted anyone from that parcel in using our lot. And under the current configuration, which seems to cause a traffic problem, the bank still has their full ingress egress rights to our rear of our property. And under the new configuration, they will continue to have those rights. I don't believe those rights have ever been violated by us, nor has there been any contact with me as the property owner concerning that easement. So, I was surprised to hear that there was an issue with regard to that easement. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to say is, it was Larry Finch who called me six, seven months ago and said, can you help us with the traffic? And I went to Starbucks and Jen Murray graciously responded and said, sure, let us, let us at our expense hire the consultants and let's see what we can do to ease the traffic to help the city. So, that's why we're here.
So, I think with regard to the easement, if there's any questions or discussion.
I just thought I would let you go through your presentation of all the things and then we'll go around for planning commission to ask questions.
Perfect. So, with regards to parking, I think that was the next thing that was noted. We have now found out from Jen and her team at Starbucks, the peak shift at this location has about eight employees. So, all eight of those employees can park in the parking spaces that are located behind the building. I assume everyone has a site plan. Good. So, doing the math, taking those eight places out of the remaining count, we are currently at nine spaces per 1,000 feet without those employee parking stalls included. So, that is between the parameters for a sit-down restaurant and for a takeout restaurant. We also know from Jen and her team that between 75 and 80% of Starbucks business at this location is mobile and drive-through. So, that is generally the vast majority of what their customer base is. And Mike hasn't seen or received any complaints about the available parking at the location from any of the three tenants. The primary complaint from FedEx and Verizon has been that the queue from the drive-through ends up in some parking areas where it shouldn't be and it's limiting the access to parking. So, again, this project intends to ease that queue or maneuver that queue in a more strategic way so that there's less impacts to the street and less impacts to the parking at the facility. The last one I think we wanted to address was the drive aisle and the pavement markings in the drive aisle. So, we have a 33-foot width drive aisle between, that's the north and south running kind of perpendicular to Aurora. And in the center of that drive aisle, we've currently proposed pavement markings to notate where the drive-through traffic should queue. I think we're willing to remove those pavement markings if that means that we will get an approval for the intended layout. That was the items I wanted to address off the bat and we can answer any other questions from all three of us that you might have.
Thank you. So, no doubt Mr. Finch approached you because a need to address the situation that's there. However, he didn't tell you how to resolve the problem, only there was a problem that needed to be addressed. So, we agree, I mean, I see other things that I think might be better than this, we'll get to that in a moment, but it, you know, it might create a lot of other additional work, but we'll see. One, the use of the driveway access easement for stacking. I know it kind of happens now by default, that's where the cars go. Maybe that should have been inquired about when you guys were first here developing this to see if that was an issue. But now going to the three lanes defines it truly as a stacking area as opposed to just kind of like an, I know it's like semantics almost, you know, which way you say it, but I think by doing the striping, that that causes a problem without getting confirmation that easement consent from PNC that you can stack in that private drive easement.
I'd like to address that.
Sure.
I don't understand that because we haven't given PNC Bank an ease, a specific area on our property, only the right to ingress and egress our property. We can change our driveway configuration as long as we don't deny them access.
And that might be the case, I just would need our law director to review the easement and confirm that, and if so, that's beautiful.
Yeah, the law director can contact me on that, I'm an attorney by the way.
Okay, that's okay.
But no, we did not give them, they do not have the, you know, the specific area. They can drive onto our property, they can go into the drive-through lane for Starbucks, they can go around the front, as long as they have access. And that access in the rear of our property, we have not only never restricted it, we have left it wide open. There are no bushes, there is nothing to define our property line, so PNC Bank has absolute full access to our property.
Right, well, that's good to know and with verification that would take care of that.
Two, and you kind of touched base on it a little bit tonight, but need to see the breakdown, the determination to be provided if the parking count works, not just, you know, looking at the parking count for the whole center, what each tenant requires and needs, what you guys need and what you're losing and to make sure that we still meet the, what's required by the code or a variance might be required based on the number of parking spaces that would be lost. Obviously, you talked about eliminating the striping that defines the three lanes, obviously. With that, you only have 11-foot wide aisle and can't back out of a 90-degree parking spot with that. And if you did do the striping and it still stayed defined as just two lanes in order to meet that requirement, then I guess we're back to the same problem we have now in that the cars block other parking spaces, but it would just take a few more cars to get in the stacking lane before it became an issue. I mean, it's an issue now, it's most likely will still be an issue. The good news is that Starbucks is really busy and it creates a lot of traffic. But with the striping, I just, I don't see how that would be applicable without getting a variance and it just doesn't really work. I don't think the city engineer would support the approval on that, not to put words in their mouth, but that's my understanding. I wanted to know from Starbucks, so I guess that would be Ms. Murray, operationally, how you maybe tried to address this. So, I know that when the pandemic hit, stores like closed, you couldn't come inside, they had limited hours. I don't know if you can now go into the store all the time. And one of the things that I've seen in other locations, not just with Starbucks, but with any of the businesses that have long drive-through stacking lanes, do you have staff members outside who, you know, get the orders from the cars ahead of time so that they help, you know, move things along? So, operationally, you have Starbucks like proposing, do they implement them and anything else that maybe I hadn't thought of?
Operationally, yes, we, you can go into the store, but as Tyler mentioned, we're at about 75% MLP and drive-through combined. MLP being the mobile order app, orders and so then park and go in, grab your drink and go. It's been a big success for Starbucks to have that order method and then, of course, the drive-through business as well. We do have handheld point-of-sale, so like you see at other stores where somebody is outside with a tablet and taking orders. That can be deployed as needed based on just kind of how the line is queuing and if the labor is available, we'll deploy somebody to go outside and help to take orders and move things along, yes. Inside, we are fully staffed, we're operating at our pre-COVID hours and we have made a few changes and made a few changes about a year ago to the layout inside the store to, again, improve efficiency. So, where we're positioning all of our equipment, it is a larger footprint for us, the inside of that store, if any of you have been inside, it's a bit larger than some of our other stores in the area, and so there's a few more steps. So, we have relocated some of our stations to help to get product out the window as fast as possible.
I think that, I don't want to say that we're post-pandemic, but we're on the pull-in downside. I think people have just become so accustomed to using the drive-through, not just with your business, but with about any of those businesses, that those who use go inside just, you know, other than, I hate that idea of waiting behind 12 cars when I can just pop right into the store and pretty much get my order free.
You can just mobile order and just pop right in and pick it up at the counter.
Exactly. Well, I'm glad you have those things implemented. Obviously, it makes sense, but it's good to know that, that you're looking at those options as well.
There's one thing I could add to.
Sure.
I think Jen mentioned it right at the beginning, but with lots taken, currently the order board, the menu board where they take orders, when not using that point-of-sale method, is at car number five. And the new, the new proposed location is right around car number seven. And Starbucks has actually done some nationwide studies on this and moving that from car five to car eight. I know we're at car seven, but it's kind of, it's close and they didn't do studies for car seven unfortunately, but car five to car eight, it allowed them to move 10 more customers, 10 more transactions through the window at the peak hour. So, not only does the proposed layout increase the queue length, but it should help increase the speed at which the vehicles flow when we're not using that point-of-sale methodology.
Your reference sheet, Charlie 101, right?
That's right.
Cool, thanks.
The only other question I have before we head it up to the other members, was there any investigation on taking the drive-through and doing the curb like you do now, but when you get to number seven, instead of hooking it around, taking it and getting the easement access from the people to the south and going down the side of that property, because that would have minimal, almost no impact on any of the other parking, wouldn't lose any, well, you might still lose a couple spaces, but it would have the least impact to pretty much everything that's getting impacted now. It would take a good signage package to orient people on how to get there too. I understand that aspect of it, but.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, basically the queue would just continue south out of this parcel onto another parcel.
Yeah, no, it's a cross-ass, that's why I said it would take up some work and who knows if it's possible, I don't know anything about the landowner, the Jason person and how that would, I'm just throwing that up as it was something that was investigated because it's already paved and it's there and there's not a lot of cars and traffic in there.
It would take a major, major legal effort because you have to get a couple of different property owners to agree to the flow of traffic and, because you have to loop them around somehow. You came off of A2. Yeah, no, I can't even, I, no.
That's okay, I just want to.
And I would have to say no, just as the property owner, I would say that is not, you know, that we just live with the current condition and to try to create that impact.
I appreciate your honesty and at least sharing that with us.
And from the engineering standpoint, I think the signage is great. Even when well-signed, it doesn't always solve the issue of people not knowing where to go. Generally, we find that when folks are controlled by curbs and parking and they're kind of on a one-track situation, that's when we have the best luck with reducing chaos and confusion. That can cause some even worse problems sometimes, so.
Well, I know that you have a lot of repeat customers and I try to give society and humans the benefit of the doubt that maybe the first time it's tough and they figure it out, maybe the second, third time, but there may be other issues that you said with other landowners that even make that more difficult or not possible, but at least I wanted to throw that to make sure that there was some thought into that. Steve?
Well, herein lies the problem. First of all, we're glad to have Starbucks in town, but we're dealing with a site plan that was done in the 70s and now here we are in 2022. I, well, the whole thing needs to be reconfigured and the parking spaces for the easement for PNC Bank, I guarantee you that those cars that are shown in the drawing here aren't bank customers because most of them are mobile banking or they're coming in on the other side because it's easier to get in. I think the whole thing needs to be reconfigured to make the, to optimize the site for a drive-through lane. Because you cannot, in this day and age, you cannot make the drive-through lane big enough because people don't want to get out of their cars. The pandemic kind of just pushed us over the edge. It was, we were teetering there before, but now we're over the edge. I mean, people just want to drive up and grab whatever they need and go. So, what you're presenting is great, but I think, well, engineering has to deal with the issues of easements, but I think that eliminating all those parking spaces by the bank and putting in a dedicated, dedicated, I mean, it's truly, you can't miss it, this is the drive-through lane, you get in it to go this way, to increase more stacking because stacking's an issue no matter where you go. No matter what town you go to, be it Starbucks, be it one of your competitors, I guarantee you there's cars sitting in the street trying to get into the site no matter how big the drive-through lane is because that's just the way society is going to. But anything is better than what we have now, so, but that's, those are just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Right?
That's an interesting point. Did you look at whether those parkings, I like Steve's thought, whether those parking places by PNC, are they needed?
No, we did not look at removing those due to the fact that it would then require variance from the city due to the reduced number of parking for the use of the facility.
Yeah, I mean, a variance, depending on how short you are and how, where those spaces are relative to the other tenants, you know, there's a trade-off, obviously.
Well, and the configuration would be done to put parking lane right towards the property, I mean, the drive-through lane towards the property line and still have parking spaces there to service FedEx.
Up against the building.
Yeah, but I can tell you, when this was built in the 70s, it was Dairy Queen, it was Broadview Savings Bank and it was Lawson's. Hi Sally, I know I'm dating myself. And it was until, I think in the 90s, when Dairy Queen decided to put in a drive-through, but before it was all street. So, the original site plan was based on pull-in, park and service.
I guess, I'm not tracking, are you talking about?
Yep.
Cutting this out and making another lane?
The western side of the property line, getting in a dedicated drive-through and then if you need to put some parking spaces, move those parking spaces in so you still have in and out.
Yeah.
So, you're going to have some crossover there.
And when you came in, you had to turn to get around.
I'm just.
But you have that, you have that now.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. But nobody's cutting through from the back of the bank to come out that way, they're going up to the light. Because I can tell you, if I cut through Giant Eagle and come through, I'm going to the light because I know I can get out.
And turning right, turning right.
Yep.
Like six and one half dozen of them.
Oh, getting out of there and making a left-hand turn is impossible.
It helps that, I get that.
Right, did you have?
But the rest of that seems.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, so on the, on the crossing traffic, that's the only thing that I see is going to be a little bit of a trouble is the stacking of cars and one, people getting out of their parking places and people crossing traffic to get out. Those are the only two things that visually.
Based on submitted.
Yeah, visually to me, it looks like it's going to be a challenge. I'm sure people will adapt to it and it'll work, but something that looks concerning to me.
Are they allowed to mark parking spots as employee-only?
I don't know, I mean, I see it at other spots. As a developer, I have about 52 properties throughout Columbus, Ohio. It is the single unenforceable act that you can have.
I figured as much.
How about the way the law?
It's like my old, it's like my old neighbor Sharky in college who yellow painted his curb in front, it worked for a little bit.
And if you look closely at the Starbucks building, you can still see the beam that be preserved from the original Lawson's building. I remember that building.
No, nothing hasn't brought up already.
Michael?
On the 45-degree angle. I'll be out here. I'm a lawyer too, sir, don't let them know till you have to. And I've been practicing for a while and I was a JAG when I did practice. Would that mean they would have to do that?
Yes.
Okay, so you're familiar with this issue on Charlie 101 where it might have to be? Did you run, did you run a hypothetical for that on the 45-degree angle? So, what effect that has?
We have not run anything on the 45. The reason for that being that 45-degree angle reduces the amount of parking.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how much more if there was a way to.
I mean, I'm, I'm the glass half-full guy right now. I think there's some, I think there's, there's the ability here, you're never going to have enough drive-through space, particularly with Dunkin' Donuts. You know, I have to be there on Saturdays because we take the dogs for pupachinos. And Ms. Murray, thanks for coming up for, from Columbus for answering the questions.
Strike that from the record.
My only other question is, is just to confirm, said peak staff number is eight?
Eight.
Okay. And what are peak hours roughly? You can ballpark, that's okay.
Roughly seven to 10:30, seven to 10:00.
Okay.
Just drive by, you'll see the peak hours.
There's probably a second peak and just not.
That's my question, is that lunchtime number close to the peak?
Peak's up again, yeah.
Early afternoon, after lunch.
I didn't get you in trouble with the alleged pupachino remark, did I? You just hand out free samples of whipped cream.
Whether there's a pumpkin in the car or not, right?
Precisely.
Michael, anything else?
No, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
First of all, sorry for being late. I don't know if this is outside of the topic, but I thought that there was conversation at some point about trying to reduce or eliminate traffic going west on 82 to turn left into that because of all the cars that are backing up to the light at 91 and then east of that? Has that been discussed at all to try to eliminate cars going in there altogether because of this backtrack of traffic on 82 and pushing them to the light where they can go in and go around? And that would potentially eliminate a lot of the issues that you're having here? Just curious about that.
It's, it's not a conversation that I've been aware of. If I'm understanding correctly, we're talking about traveling east on Aurora and.
West. So, when you go.
I'm sorry, west, yes, west and then turning left into the facility.
Correct. I know that there was a conversation about that. I don't know if it was here or someplace, I'm thinking last year, to try to eliminate because the way what's happening now is as cars are stacking up, getting backed up from, let's say, your parking lot or FedEx, they're spilling out onto 82. Some people are not being so nice and blocking traffic going east, but that's beside the point. The traffic trying to turn left into Starbucks parking lot, FedEx, a lot of people just want to go straight and head west on 82 to get to 480 or points west, but all of the traffic is now being backed up before 91 in front of Chase and going back to Walgreens. So, instead of having, I know what the situation here, but eliminating it altogether, not making a left to get into Starbucks, moving them up to the lights because it's a left-turn lane there anyway and having better traffic flow. I mean, people. I mean, people are gonna go to Starbucks regardless if they can take that first left or the second left. I don't know if that fixes it now.
Well, as a property owner, we have no easement rights on the bank property. So will the city, you know, eminent domain, all that property so that we have the right to use all that private property and, and you're going to eliminate our main entrance off of eighty-two? Oh, my goodness. I mean, how do, how do you do that?
Again, built in the seventies.
Yeah, I mean, that's a left turn in only, I understand, I understand what you're saying. But, and you know now that people are utilizing those roads to get to your building, just, there's nothing legally allowing them to do it. It's just, oh, it's one big paved area.
But if you put up signage that says, enter drive through Starbucks on somebody else's property? That ain't gonna go over too good.
I understand.
I'm just throwing that out there. It's, it's a mess now. It's, it's only getting worse.
Well, it's a, it's a mess because you have multiple property owners in a commercial complex.
It wasn't, like I said, in the study, it wasn't developed as a full cross easement.
It was cabbaged together.
If there was something new with development coming in, that would be, that would be part of it and see that all over.
I have not discussed this with Larry, but addressing your concern, other cities, I'm doing a major development on Mayfield Road right now, the old Mayland Plaza on Mayfield Heights. It's thirteen acres. And what the city of Mayfield Heights did twelve years ago, I think you folks should consider it for all of this property, including my buddy Joe Venni's shopping center behind us and some of the other things, you should do a master plan. They did a, they did a corridor master plan and you can address all of these problems and you can add traffic lights and you can use your eminent domain powers and, and force the property owners to grant the easements that are necessary for the betterment of the community. But you folks have to do that. We don't have the power to do that.
That's all I have.
Yeah, in new development, there's no doubt in a new development that would, and we see that all the time. It's a little bit harder than existing, but it's still not a bad idea. Lynn, other thoughts or comments on this submission?
The people that have issue at a level that they feel compelled to complain, they call me. So they don't, they don't call Starbucks or the property owner. They, they call City Hall. So I, probably most complaints I get are from PNC customers exiting the bank drive through and then trying to use the easement to, to exit.
Who uses a drive through?
And then maybe the second most common one are customers that were accessing FedEx or Verizon and get trapped in the parking space. Those people are highly annoyed. I know that PNC Bank isn't happy with the current situation. I've received complaints from the actual bank employees. I've also spoken with our previous law director, David Maestros, about the easement language and I've spoken to the current law director about the easement language. And I actually received the same comment from both of those law directors, which was what I included in the planner's report, that the applicant should make contact with PNC Bank and determine whether they're in agreement that this change would be consistent with the easement language.
Yeah, and that's something that we can pursue. I guess, just, just to state it again, you know, the, the intent of the project is to improve all of those concerns. There's no magic bullet for this site. As we've noted, it was designed many, many years ago. The intent here is to improve. The alternative from Starbucks perspective is a no build.
Well, I, I think my recommendation to you would be for you to, I must table this tonight so that you could, because what is presented here, I, I don't see it getting approved. I don't think you want a no vote because then you kept a change. I think if you were to eliminate the stacking and get rid of the eleven foot wide aisles and study what maybe Mr. Shebeck suggested to see how that worked, providing the parking count, no matter which way you look at doing this, to support what's needed and, and come back before us. By all means, you have the right to, to ask us to vote on this tonight, but I, I would not be able to support it as it is at the moment. I appreciate you trying to make a bad situation better and I know it's not easy. No matter what you do, there, there are some things, you're fixing one, you know, five problems will still cause a new problem that can probably come up, but if we eliminate them and go in the right direction, obviously that's what everybody wants. And we appreciate that. Anybody else have any other comments on this that relates to Dave?
No.
Steve?
No.
I have a question though. So how do people access the drive through for PNC? There, it's not on their property. They, they go through the, the southern property to access their drive through, right?
They use that easement.
That's right. They have the same easement, but it's not generally through the portion of the easement that's on this parcel. It would be from Church Street to the west.
So then why, why can't we make the, the queuing line for, for Starbucks come through that same easement and start and just queue from there? Like, I mean?
Queuing it around at the back.
Oh, yeah, just like we talked about, going up to the light, turning in and queuing around. Like, I mean, I don't see how that's.
We don't have that easement right.
Yeah.
The bank has.
The bank holds.
Oh, the bank has the easement. Oh, I didn't know they.
And this is what, this is what is so frustrating to me.
I understand that.
Even about the law director's comments. We granted that bank the right to use our property and now they're complaining that, well, geez, you know, it's not working out so good. Well, you got a lot of property to the other side of your bank. Change your configuration. Make it work. We don't have the right to use their.
And you bring up a good point.
It's a one-way street here, guys.
They could put in a freestanding drive through.
We're, we're trying to help the city. We're trying to get traffic off of.
Yeah.
If I can interject, has anybody had that conversation with PNC?
There's never been a reason to. It's, it's not a problem for us. We never denied that.
So the, so the answer is no.
You mean, meaning allowing you guys to come and go on to this problem?
So Lynn? Lynn, can we set up a meeting with these folks in PNC and talk about the overall operation of both of these businesses and the impact? Because PNC can do some workarounds, they can go to a freestanding drive through. If they don't want to do that, then they're stuck because it's his property and they have an easement. And if the drive through customers are complaining, you know?
Yeah, I think they would, I mean, they're looking for a solution as well.
But again, that building was also designed and that drive through has been there since the seventies. And the whole site needs, I mean, we have an issue with two people, two property owners. The one to the south, I don't even think we want to get involved with that because that's still a property in flux. But I think these folks in PNC need to talk about what's gonna work best for everybody. Because they clearly need to have additional drive through space and if they want to expand over to the other side and reconfigure that parking area like I suggested, that's gonna impact the bank and they have to understand that. But still, we have a, a right for the city to clean up the issue with getting in and out of that site during.
What I'm not understanding, and this isn't my party, this Starbucks is a party. I'm just here to help them. What I don't understand is if the plan we're putting before you is going to be better than what now exists. It's not perfect, but it's better than what now exists. It will definitely get traffic off of eighty-two. It'll definitely make the exit out of that PNC drive through more accessible. It's gonna help. I mean, I don't quite understand why you would be so resistant to improving the situation. And then if it's still not improved enough, let's, let's come back to the drawing board at that point. But we can get you immediate relief to this problem right now.
Sir, I'll just let you know for record, I'm fine with it. It's, it's subject to the forty-five degree angle piece. But I just want to confirm too, you've never had any comments from PNC?
They, I have never received. They may have complained to the city hall. They haven't. And believe me when I tell you, and you can ask this of Catherine Prokop, when I first brought Starbucks to Twinsburg, we are the most congenial property owners to our neighbors. We have never been involved in a dogfight with any one of our forty-five shopping centers. I have never received a phone call.
That's not, that's not what we're saying here. What we're saying, and I agree with you, it will be an improvement, but it's not gonna fix the problem. Because I guarantee you, right now, people are like, oh, I'll go to Starbucks in Hudson. Oh, I'll go to Starbucks in Solon because the line's too long. So you're gonna add capacity. It's just gonna move, it's, you're kicking the can down the road because people are gonna fill in and you're still gonna have the same problem. So what I'm looking for is the, is, is the best solution possible. And I, what you're proposing is an improvement, but I'm looking at, let's do something that's gonna make, what can we do with this site to make the best situation?
I, I hear, and I, we couldn't agree with that more, but I don't know that it's within our power to do that because we don't control the other properties.
Right, but without a conversation with the people that are your neighbors, it's a question mark and we cannot answer that question. So from my standpoint, it's have a conversation and take to the next step. And if they decide that they don't want to talk to you, well, that's also, that's information for us.
No, we, the city would facilitate that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Can we do that?
I know an employee from PNC Bank has gone to the actual store and tried to have a conversation with employees at the store and they were told, well, it's the city's problem, not ours.
And that might just be a regular employee and not.
Exactly. So obviously that wasn't the answer that.
I think we as a city need to facilitate some discussion.
Yeah.
So now we put the ball in our court. Let's make it, let's move it forward.
So, yeah, I think we can table it. And I think the things that we will do on our end is have that conversation. PNC will reach out. We will recalculate the parking counts and we will remove the pavement markings in the center of the drive.
Yeah, once you do the, the calculate and figure out the numbers of what you need, at least look, if you, if you would, at those spaces that are up against the PNC drive through to see if it makes sense to utilize that and like allow you still stack more cars and, and install more property.
This is the next item.
And not block of those spaces that are up against the building that affect your.
You didn't get this?
You may not have heard from what the city has. Then try to make the people happy and make it work and get it done as fast as possible. And then we appreciate that, I mean, for sure.
And again, we are supportive of it. But like I said, I'm just looking, let's, let's explore all our options and try and find something because let's only do it once. Because I can tell you, I mean, you could make, you could put that thing down at the exit at four eighty and have a dedicated drive through lane and still be stacked up. Because that's, I, that's what people do. And if they can't get, if it's line's too long, then they'll go someplace else. But, but it helps your business.
And we, again, we appreciate the time and effort that you're putting into this for the benefit of the city as well as, as Starbucks and everyone around, around you. So we'll look forward to seeing something from you going forward. And of course, if you reach out to Lynn, she'll help set up, you know, those meetings and keep this ball rolling.
Sounds good. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second item on the work session agenda is the final site plan approval for Holt Propertionics on Darryl Road. Name and address and introduction, what you're looking at forward this evening.
Lee on SAP HED two two zero eight two, Green Roads, Derry Park, Ohio. Here representing Dr. Holt for Holt Properties at nine one eight floor Darryl Road. We were from the board in March, preliminary. Since then, we resubmitted, we made some changes. The building footprint mainly stayed intact. We're thirty-four hundred square foot long story structure. Fourth to the next office, six operating chairs. We've got twenty-five parking spaces, what we call Phase One. There is no real future intention for Phase Two and Three yet. It was more or less so the owner would understand what the possibilities are for those structures. So we've kind of, if you look at SD three in our packet, that might be the best view of the actual, what's being constructed. With the best graphics. The structure itself, we lived through ARB, we lived through all brick structure. We've got some, well, it's a majority of the bricks. So some hat accents of brown and white, black in color. There were some comments by the city engineer. Originally, we submitted a site plan with the entrance drive to the south of an existing telephone pole and fire hydrant. So that way we could have additional parking up against the building. The city engineer asked that we'd be at least a hundred feet away from Richner Court. So we accommodated and we should have that, that proposal in front of you, which basically just flipped the four apartment spaces to the, to the south and the drive to the north. There were another, there were some other comments about the site plan landscaping. We provided some calculations. There were additional comments that the, the fire department had that had Phase Two and Three, that a fire hydrant would be required and we understand that. We're not gonna provide a tap for that at this moment. She's not, I'm certain that has to occur. There will be, the, the property will be consolidated as part of the development. And we did provide a business area plan. I think that was the city's comments. We would trust.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure we understand. I know that right now we're looking at the Phase One approval. Two and three, we'd love to see it. I think the buildings look really nice. The building looks really nice and they have that little development there I thought, thought would be very good. The underground stormwater detention system that you're putting in now is based on the full buildout of the site. However, you may not end up doing those other phases, but you'll be prepared should you.
Correct. And then there's, there's, there's a, the engineers looked at possibly adding additional tanks in the other phases too, so, if, if it changes, so.
If, if, meaning if there was a change in how we calculated stormwater, but what's there based on our current, the current regulations, what you're putting in would work for the whole development? Okay? Yeah, you, you included the, the business area plan, which stipulates some of the regulations for setbacks and such. This moves tonight. One of the conditions would be obviously any change to the business area plan would require you to come back for approval for any changes. Obviously, the lot consolidation plat, that includes the dedication of the request piece of Darryl Road, yes, would need to be part of the final approval. And the final engineering approval of the stormwater management facilities plan and the long-term maintenance agreement.
That's correct.
All right, Steve?
Well, I brought it up and when we initially had this project, that I still think traffic's gonna be an issue. And with property frontage on Richner, I don't see why we wouldn't be putting the business entrance on a street that's less, has less traffic than Route ninety-one. You have the school, you have Vance Auto Parts, you have the senior center, you have the plaza, there's no dedicated turn lanes, although that's coming. But even if you did put dedicated turn lanes in, there's gonna be a turn lane for the condo development, the left turn lane. And then, so it's, it's, I just see that driveway being on ninety-one as just adding to a problem that already exists in that area, especially, especially with school traffic.
I think the problem is, is I don't know if you can get the, the road a hundred feet from that main intersection.
That's what it is. It's too close.
There's still a lot less traffic on Richner than there is on ninety-one. And even a hundred feet is not gonna, I'm telling you. You know, your, your clients, customers are gonna be frustrated when they can't get out because people are not gonna let them out. I live on ninety-one. People don't let me out. And I'm right, I'm, I'm less than a hundred feet from a traffic light and they don't let me out. I'm just saying. I, I don't have a problem with it, but it's gonna be frustrating. And with adding two more additional buildings on that site, it's even gonna be worse of a problem. So I think from a development standpoint, you're developing for a specific client, but those two other buildings, when people look at that and go like, there already, there's already traffic issues here. Why would I? Why would I put my office space here? I just see it as a problem. But that's just my comment.
All right.
Other than that, I think everything's in compliance.
All right. Thank you. David?
Lot 8 is not a part of this project, correct?
That's correct. Sure, before I say that, Lot 8 is not part of this project. I mean, at some point, it'd be great to include that in this project, and then I think we'd be able to come up with that. And there was conversations of that, but, you know, I think that would be the old at some point.
You've had conversations about it?
No, I've had conversations with the doctor.
Okay.
She has not had conversations with the landowner. Her first step is to get her practice from Chicago to Twinsburg.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, you were just saying that?
Lot 8 is owned by the city of Twinsburg.
So, if we own, if the city owns that, is there a possibility of working with the doctor and having egress and egress on Richener Court instead of 91?
It's complicated.
Is that a possibility?
No, not at this time.
It's not?
No.
Okay. That's unfortunate, because it seemed like it would be a really nice situation to have it go onto Richener Court. Okay. So much for that idea.
Nice idea.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I, I think it's the same thing, especially during the school year, when you have kids going in and out in the morning to Walcox, and then in the afternoon, and you only get a two-month or three-month break. It's, 91 is, it's what it is. So, it's a main thoroughfare, and it's being used, and it's only going to get more traffic as other things open up. And hopefully, we do some better things around Twinsburg Square, and we do some things like downtown. It's only going to increase traffic. The more people that are moving out, you have the addition of the senior condos that are going up right by the train tracks. I mean, who knows how much longer the vacant land is going to be just north of where Goodyear and Carpet Country are? And if that gets developed, then it's going to be just bonkers. Which, I guess, in one way is good, another way it's not. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to go onto 91. I just, I don't, I don't see it being a good situation for people trying to get in. And if you decide if she, if she does the full development into Phase 2 and Phase 3, impossible. Ingress and egress is impossible.
And we'll have the same situation we just talked about in the previous agenda.
Has there been any discussion with the city engineer? Is the reason why that just was poo-pooed?
Yeah, she would not approve access onto Richener Court.
Because of the 100-foot?
Yeah.
Or even with the other logical discussions we've had? I mean, there may be other issues that we're just not aware of. I mean, it also makes Phase 2 a whole different, you know, scenario if you were to do that. It may not even...
Well, you could turn the building, though.
Yeah, you could orient it and maybe squeeze in through there, but...
And I'm sorry for my ignorance, the 100-foot requirement, can you take a minute and explain that to us ignorant folks?
I think there's a standard distance from the signalized intersection.
Allows for like five or six cars.
Correct. That's what we were told by the engineer, that we need to maintain at least that.
And I know that Amy would probably shoot me where I sit, but what about eliminating that light and putting it around about? I said it, didn't I? Did I say that enough? I did.
It'd be a great idea, but I don't think there's enough room.
Yeah, there's not enough room there for that.
That's too bad.
It is too big, because I love rough about it.
So do I.
Those here in the city, don't, I don't mean, I mean, the community are against them. I think they're aggrieved.
They're awesome. I just, adding more traffic onto 91, people trying to get in and out in this initial phase with everything else that's going on, it's a nightmare. It's only going to get worse with potentially Phase 2 and Phase 3. Yeah. Nothing more for me.
Thank you. Craig?
One question I have, so, you have sidewalks on 91, right?
Correct.
That you're going to install. Is there any reason they don't wrap around onto Richener Court, or?
We were required to put them on 91. It was not required. We said we were required not to.
Is there a reason why they were not required to come up with Richener also?
No, other than, I think they, with the intersection potentially widening, if Darrow Road widens, wouldn't want them now adding sidewalk at that intersection. There's no sidewalk on that side of Richener Court.
Correct. To connect to.
I think if you did Phase 2, could require it.
Yes, I mean, that wouldn't be a problem. Look at it at that time.
And then, I guess, so it looks like final engine approval for the vehicular circulation and pedestrian, but that's still to come? Like, they haven't approved this layout?
For what's that?
Vehicular and pedestrian circulation, so it's final engine approval required?
Actually measuring it.
Is that the forcing a right-of-way out...
Oh, that's the engineering part of the right-of-way.
For the right-of-way dedication.
Yeah, that they're going to be taking a little piece of the property for the turning and flying there. That's the part that still needs the approval.
Is the right-of-way portion.
That'd be part of the dedicated lot consolidation.
Got you.
And we've achieved 100 feet, so, okay. Yeah, I have no more questions.
Thank you. My call.
Why the engineer shutdown, Richener? Just because of the 100-foot issue?
The distance between where it would outlet to the signalized intersection.
Lynn, I won't, I don't have the data, but I'll go out and measure after the meeting. But the intersection of McDonald's is not 100 feet, is within less than 100 feet from this signalized intersection. So, I'm not picking a fight with Amy, but if we're going to set a standard, then the standard has to be citywide.
I think one thing to consider is this isn't a retail use. The, these are small offices that are by appointment, so the traffic volume isn't like you would have at a retail or restaurant-type facility. I mean, it's controlled by appointments.
But the issue is ingress and egress to a major street through our city that has significant traffic backup. And I can tell you right now, when that light turns red on 91 going south at Richener, it's backed up almost to the plaza. And we live in a society that's not very generous with granting people, you come out in front of me. So, it's going to create frustration, and then we're going to be dealing, you're going to be getting calls about it.
Right. I think this, this property owner probably sees it as a trade-off to have frontage on 91, and if...
I think access is definitely a lot more.
Yeah. If you have to wait to pull out, then that's what you do.
All right. Well, we'll let the record reflect that, because when it comes back, and I probably won't be on planning commission, but...
Sir, was there a preference on where you, it was a preference?
Correct. 91, she's always wanted to be on 91.
That's what it is. You've heard enough doom saying from my colleagues, I'm not going to stack on to it.
Anything else, other than...
No, Mr. Chairman. Eyeglasses still half-full.
Thank you. Lynn, anything else on this?
No, I can tell you that I have discussed this with the engineer, and this is the access that she prefers. And again, I would consider that the use, it's not, people aren't there late in the evening, they're not there early in the morning. I get it that they'll be...
Right after school.
Yeah.
I hope you get business from school.
Though they can walk in.
It's a little bit...
It's the wrong school age.
Right, but I think there's...
Need to build a necessary vessel.
Listen to me. I'm hoping I get a positive comment from you this evening, but you get them while they're young.
Yes. You just need, you know, that you take the comments back to your client, you know, if it gets approved this evening, so that she's aware of what the concerns were, that she deems it to go forward. I mean, yes, it is a small amount of traffic at times, but it will still be an issue at that time. So, as long as she's aware of that and she knows it, then so be it.
Is there any ETA on the subsequent phases?
On the subsequent phases, no. Now, that was really more just a study.
Understood.
She wants to get here, basically get her, get established, and then at that point, see where it goes from there.
Can I have another question?
Please.
If, looking into the future, phases 2 and 3 get developed, will that driveway onto 91 be extended to each of those other areas? Is that what it's going to be? So, it's going to be the single driveway going out to 91, access...
Correct. And that shows on, that showed on one of the drives.
Yeah, even on SD 3, you kind of see the drive. It'll loop around.
Yeah. So, this whole parking here, this is parking, Phase 2 parking here, Phase 1 parking.
Thanks, sir.
And parking over here.
So, this is roadway.
Yeah. Who knows what will happen with Lot number 8?
Exactly.
At that time, maybe something magic would happen.
Lot 8 could be in place still.
Be a better development.
If you look at the original even submission, it actually showed the entire development that it was easier to see. But it, yes, that is the main access drive-in to the, for all three buildings.
Just can't come out here.
Yep.
According to engineer.
Is there anything else, David?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll get back to you in the regular meeting agenda. It's 8:05, and we'll roll into that. Lynn, I happened to notice that the regular meeting agenda did not have public participation listed after the regular meeting, minutes after the approval of the minutes, I should say, which is where that goes. So, do we need to have a motion to add that, or do we just add it?
I think we can just add it.
Because normally, that's where it would be. All right. So, item 1B will be the public participation, but let's start with 1A, which is the approval, regular meeting, 8:05. I'll start, the first item is the approval of the May 16, 2022 minutes.
So moved.
Same.
I guess there's nothing to revise. It's going to be, well, I guess we can do a little call if you'd like.
Mr. Shipley?
I wasn't there, but yes.
Oh, okay.
Obsteing, yeah. Obsteing, wasn't there.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
So, the minutes are approved as submitted. 1B, public participation, opportunity for members of the community to address planning commission. Come to the mic, drop your name and address, sign in. If you have not, please, on the...
Just one person, just Sally.
Okay.
I would appreciate, I'm Sally Gadox, 9253 Liberty Road, Twinsburg. I would appreciate a copy of your minutes from last meeting.
If those are available.
I did not submit the court order to you, and I'm hoping that it's addressed. And I hope that you've gotten the court order by now. I just listened to you guys, and I'm amazed that you can do what you can do under the Back to last week's meeting, whenever it was brought to your attention, that there was a court order that provided for 35-foot. I think most of you were reading, you heard what went on, there's no sense in rehashing it. But the insults have just got to stop. We're the people, and when we're right and we get insulted, it even makes it worse. I know that you were told that if you didn't approve the developer's request, you would be sued. Well, I'm going to be out today night, and I don't know if you're not, they're in the streets tonight. Our people are working, we're getting a petition, we're getting a petition to turn that order around. Because you can't just say, the developer's going to sue us, and we've got to give in. We are the people, we have laws, we've got rulings. You had a ruling for eight years, for eight years, you violated that ruling. Eight years. The ruling was violated, and boy, I'm having problems with which glasses to wear, so just bear with me. In 2012, you increased the height of the industrial. I read the minutes. Mark, I believe you were here. I have a whole page of notes that I addressed, I addressed to you, the board, about my concerns about what was going on. Those minutes, excuse me, are not in the record, although I have mine. We talked about conditional use. There is no conditional use, as far as I know, and in a zoning code certified with American Legal. There is no conditional use for industry. And yet, this new ordinance that's coming, and I don't know how planning commission is, how their duties are usurped by council to say, here's what we changed, what you've done. I would think I have to come back to you. From what I see, the council already approved it. They made changes to everything that you suggested, including putting in a conditional use. And the beauty of it, the way it's written, it's like, well, the developer agreed that he would make it 35 because the people were complaining. No. The courts ordered it 35. It wasn't the developer's gracious behavior. Those are insults to our charter, our zoning code, our people. When we go in court, spend two years, I spent my money for two years to get a court order, and then it comes back, and for eight years, it's violated. I'm glad there's nobody else here. I really am. I'm embarrassed, terribly embarrassed, that we have to bring this to your attention. So, I don't know how you guys do your work, how you can do it, because it certainly is complicated from where I sit. So, we get the violation, and for 14 days after the court ordered, you must go back to 35, Mr. Finch came to you and said, approve the FedEx at 45. And for eight years, it's approve it, approve it, approve it. And you did. And I hear tonight, we have to follow the advice we're given. Then we say, we have to follow the experts. And then we say, now, we've got to follow the developer. This has got to stop. And as I said, people are in the streets, they've had enough. Violations against us have got to stop. Three major administrators leaving at one time. We're so crippled, but this is the day that we're going to start healing. We're going to start healing.
Can't wait for them to go on.
Okay. Couldn't be like that. All right, I can talk loud and I can... Anyway, this is the first area we have to deal with. After we take as much time as we can in our own resources to try and get our justice, I have worked for six years on the charter. We have been at charge of seven million dollars.
Can it shut off?
Well, I do want to pick up the comments.
So, I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to real serious, serious addressing the properties on city, but we have to go to the streets.
Maybe he does not plug it correctly.
I had the musician, that's why I was playing.
They didn't kick it back.
As I said before, I was here in October 15, 2012, right after we started jogging around with our code. And I have a page that has those, my concern, and all the due, and then go to 40, just a little bit. You are absolutely right. And nothing happens, for eight years, nothing happened. You can be right, but in Twinsburg, you're wrong. You heard me. Mark, you asked me, Sally, what do you think the height was? I said 35. Man, what do you think? 45. Mr. Xander, whatever. Oh, it's 45. I agree with Lynn, Sally's wrong. Can you imagine, can you imagine a professional person saying that, and then find out that you didn't read the court order for eight years? You wonder why you're losing faith in government. I know there's nothing you can do about it, but I don't think it makes your job any more severe. severe. So anyway, we've got that out of the way, and now we've got a really serious problem coming. We talk about redevelopment downtown, Twinsburg, wait. You have a C I C, Community Improvement Corporation, under state law seventeen twenty-four, that allows you to have a C I C. And you know what the land use commission told the state when it entered in the nineteen second year? We have an idea of how you can get the best use of your land in the primary, called a C I C. But it is only written for counties, townships, non-chartered. And the reason is charter cities are so unique that they provide for their own planning and land use. And our planning commission has all, you, all power, all power to plan and provide for the uses of land. You make recommendations to council, council considers it, eleven oh three, eleven oh five or zoning code's clear. Once you recommend to council, council considers, they provide for a public hearing, and the voters vote. The C I C was established in two thousand thirteen, based on Westlake, kind of all, so everybody else is doing it, they don't have the charter seven eight one. And very clear in law, very clear in the law, because the uniqueness of charter and planning commission's power, that true power, because of that uniqueness, the seventeen twenty-four C I C cannot infringe, only under one condition, if the community structures a C I C, it shall be based upon a planning commission recommended to council to amend the zoning code to include the state law. Amend the code and the map. We never got a chance. We got what Coyote Falls was, we got what Westlake was. So I'm telling you, there is no C I C in this town. I don't care how many years it's worked. And they're gonna put that money on the table for our bed tax, thousands and thousands, three hundred thousand of our tax dollars for them to organize. We want that money back. We have in our zoning code, development plans, chapter twelve, you can develop this town with any project you want, but the planning commission will recommend it, and you will have the rules and regulations. Seven eleven, we adopted that years ago, Community Planning and Development Department. You go there, then you go to the mayor, then you go to council, then you go to law, you don't go to the C I C. I can't believe I'm saying this thing. I don't know what to tell you, I don't know what we're gonna do, this is not gonna happen. I don't wanna have to go to court, 'cause I can go to the court just waiting, C I C doesn't have that. 'Cause C I C law seventeen twenty-four is clear, you must get money, you must recommend and amend the zoning code, you must. And you must, you must have a rule, either voter, to amend the code. I got the law, I took it out of the vote, I don't have to give a theory, I got it out. You talk to me, you're the planning commissioner. Oh, it's nothing, it's just a corporation, everybody's doing it. It's a mess, guys. Our city's in a mess. Maybe you're not so, it is not so bad.
I don't know, I think we need to make a motion, yeah.
Maybe my time is up. Maybe I still have to say. I shouldn't want to have to report. I don't wanna have to have a contempt report over in the city, because the building is forty-five feet, building is thirty-five. And then we compliment the developer, I'm gonna go, oh, because you're not happy with me building forty-five foot building, I'll reduce it to thirty-five, and then I'll get a conditional use permit. And I got news for you, conditional use permits do not apply to industrial wanted to be, they do not. Look at your code, eleven fifty-one, just look at it, here's a grid. There's no X at those condition, at I want to improve. There's no condition for a conditional use, there's none. Get it to the normans. We will heal building to thirty-five with the understanding that we are on the good path. What are you gonna do, guys? I don't wanna go to court, I spent a hundred thousand dollars in court. I got seventy thousand back because that was right. All the rest of those incidentals, mileage, paperwork, filings, all that can be returned, that my medical fees were returned. And then I have attorney, his gracious enough to say, well, you know, I maybe can, we can work it out a little bit of a break, so it won't cost you so much. And then he has to come to this meeting, at this podium, and go over to the law director and say, why are you saying forty-five? Owen says it in the law, and Warren said, open your book. Open it, let me see it. Look down and say, oh. If you rent a court order, you would see. And then all of a sudden, immediate executive session, oh, we gotta go in executive session and tell council that our vote wasn't changed. And Mr. Mastro, Mr. Mastro said clear as day, I will immediately amend the vote, immediately, as in two thousand and twelve, fourteen, fourteen. That's where we are, guys, but we're in the streets. We're in the streets. We're gonna reverse council's action, if we can, we're gonna start. We get a new lawyer, we get a new planning planner, we get new help, and we get good help, people who respect our charter, who respect our laws. No more of this nonsense, no more waiting eight years, no more court order, eight years. Now, what there should be is a serious investigation, what happened to the height of those buildings, and the bulk, and the excess, excess, that the developer benefited financially from all the excess bulk? Where is the investigation for that? Well, we're not gonna get it in city, we're in, I'll tell you that, not gonna be so expensive. But there are agencies out there that are just waiting to pay them a paper. Because you don't give a developer eight years of additional bulk, ten feet on every building, up at the cornerstone, ten feet, and you're talking warehouse bulk. Not just ten feet, years, that many buildings, build on compliance, get built. I don't know, guys, I can't go much longer, I'm losing my eyesight fast, thank God my brain's still good. But I try to help you as much, as much as we can. But we're in the streets, we're gonna start getting messages to people, we need an administration that administers our city. And we're gonna get it. And we're not gonna wait for the next election. We can do it other ways. It's not a threat, I really feel badly, and I don't know how you can function, I couldn't function up there. So, thank you for the time, I know it's been more than five minutes.
Thank you. You share some interesting thoughts and things to think about and look at, but I just do wanna state, so that you know, one of the statements that you made is definitely not correct. I did not vote for a project gumbo approval because I was threatened, or the city was threatened with a lawsuit. I stated at that meeting the reason why I voted yes for it, and that had nothing to do with it. And you can look at, I don't know if it's outlined specifically in the minutes, but I'll surely share that with you again if you'd like. But the blanket statement that that's why Planning Commission approved it.
Well, that's what I understood.
All right. Just so that you know, that I don't think that the blanket statement is correct, just.
Then I apologize, you know, I apologize if I misunderstood.
Yeah.
But that was my understanding, that you were told that the developer, that the city lost for the lawsuits in the past, and that the developer will sue again, if I misunderstood.
Well, I can't, I'm not gonna confirm or deny what was discussed, I'm not gonna say that it was or wasn't, but that, again, for me, I voted for it for the reasons I stated, and anybody else who wants to make a comment is more than welcome to, or you can say nothing, that's your prerogative, but I just wanted you to know that that's not the case.
Okay, well, I also understood that the next day after your voting, that the law director was gonna give you the reason of why forty-five was legal. Did you ever get it?
Why forty?
Mrs. Gadoch.
The reason why forty-five was what?
Legal.
Forty-five feet height was legal.
Hold on, Mrs. Gadoch, you know me, we've talked, and you know me, I don't mince words, and I don't care about litigation one way or the other, 'cause it's a field of battle on which I used to fight. Some of the questions are going into things that may be privileged from discussions with the law director. But I will vouch for the chairman, he's not struck me as one person who would vote one way or the other under threat of litigation, one way or the other, so. I just wanna go on the record and vouch for that.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't use it as a criticism against them.
Not taking that way, ma'am, at all.
Absolutely, I don't know, I don't think God is giving you too much help, we need the best, we need the best, and we conform with us, and we're gonna get the best, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be letting you go wrong here. We can afford it, but the C I C, not gonna happen. And I'm sorry, after nine years, read the law, state law says you will not do it unless you put it in your zoning code, and unless you put it in your map, and you identify the parcels that are involved. Now, I understand the ordinance that was passed, never mentions us, never mentions even Planning Commission, you didn't recommend it, and the law says you have to. You must advise council to amend the code and the map. And that immediately kicks right into public hearing and a right to vote according to seven eight one. We're different than Coyote Falls and Westlake and Monroe Falls and after Arlington, now they can do what they want. So that's where we are, guys, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Any comments? David, Steve? Nope.
No.
Michael?
Sure.
All right, let's move on to the next item, which was the revised site plan drive for Starbucks, which has been tabled. So a final site plan for Holt Orthodontics. Did you have anything else that you'd like to share with Planning Commission based on our conversations?
Yeah, so I would like to mention that the property, the property, three hundred foot, property on ninety, ninety one, sorry, this, to not have access drive from that, I don't think you're correct, there's almost two acres of property, come off of those natural streets, that don't give you property. You know, we've actually, now we located this site, entrance drive to the center, almost to the center of the property, not, try not to create a conflict between the school and the property, we're trying to, so, I guess that's, that's, I think, seems like the largest issue that I have, that's my point, I know the owner would.
Thank you. David, any final comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Steve?
Nope.
Right?
Yeah.
Michael?
Mr. Chairman, thanks for coming, this evening.
Anything, Lynn, else on this for consideration?
I'm just, I'm not sure that the representatives' comments got recorded, so I'd just like for the record to repeat what Leon said, that the access drive is, has been designed midway on that front edge, midway between Richener Court and the school driveway, and that's really our best case scenario with what we have to work with.
You repeated that because the mic was out of the podium, and it may not have been picked up, all right? Thank you. Okay, I'd like to make the following motion, upon reliance upon representations made by applicant and their representative, along with the submitted site plans, landscape plan, and business area plan for Holt Orthodontics office buildings, phase one, ninety-one eighty-four Darrow Road, permanent parcel numbers sixty-four dash zero zero two six one, sixty-four dash zero two zero three zero, and sixty-four dash zero three five two two. Date stamped received June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. I move for final site plan approval with the following conditions. One, settle an approval of the lot consolidation plan that includes the dedication of requested Darrow Road right of way. Two, approval by the city engineer of the stormwater management facilities plan and the long-term maintenance agreement. And three, any changes to the business area plan must be approved by Planning Commission.
Second.
Second, but Michael, discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Kleiman?
No.
Mr. Shebeck?
No.
Final site plan approval, three, two, which is actually a recommendation to City Council, or they'll have the final approval at that time. Thank you. Communications and miscellaneous, next on the list, David?
Lynn, I reached out to you about that trail connecting Jody Lynn Lane in the back, and you had responded, thank you for responding.
It looks really washed out.
It's washed out, and if I remember your comment back to me by email, you said that really the purpose of it is for emergency vehicles to have access going back there?
Right, so the trail and the property that the trail is located on is owned by the HOA.
Which one, the one that's Boulder Brook or the one that's Jody Lynn Lane?
Both.
Both, okay, so at some point, there's a split, and one takes over, and one of the other?
It may be the same HOA. There may be an umbrella HOA, but, so with that said, you know, typically I'd say, well, that's the HOA, so we'll let them know that they should do something about that, but in the case of the trail that you're speaking to, that connects Jody Lynn Lane to the Hunter's Bridge Development, that was required by Planning Commission as providing an emergency access.
Do you guys know what we're talking about? You're in?
I do, yeah.
So it's in disrepair.
Enlightenment.
So the Boulder Brook, which is the new development across from McTarian, that goes behind Tri-County Concrete, if you go all the way back to, I guess it's phase two, there's a cul-de-sac, I don't know how to describe it as far as where you would see it from Tri-County, anyway, so there's a cul-de-sac, and there's a crushed asphalt trail, probably grinding from the road or something else, that goes into the woods behind the cul-de-sac, and then eventually goes underneath the high voltage wires, technically underneath Simmichack, if you were to extend it, and then it connects to Jody Lynn Lane, which is, what development is that? I forget, it's the one that's on Cannon Road by the train tracks.
Right, yeah, I remember.
I forget what that development is called, anyway, so there's a, there's a trail that connects the two developments together, I happen to use that trail, so I'm probably the only one who knows about this, but once you get from the new developments into the woods, there is quite a bit of water runoff that's coming from up above, and it's completely washed out, there's, I mean, an emergency vehicle, if they had somebody inside of it, there's no way. I didn't even think an emergency vehicle can make it through, 'cause there are some gullies there that you'd have to, and I'm not exaggerating, probably jump two or three feet to try to get across of it, and there are two or three or four of them.
Well, that's why I asked you if it was that upper, more sloped trail, because it looked really washed out.
So who's responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that trail?
The HOA. So.
Thanks.
We're in a unique place with an incoming mayor, and I think we're gonna have to reach out to the HOAs that are responsible and have a larger discussion about the maintenance of it. I know Steve remembers the many conversations that we had.
That's all I am. Thank you. Steve?
No, I don't have anything. I guess just discussion, is there any action, the item Sally brought up, what for us to take?
Well, I think everybody, I mean, if you can make sure that we all get a copy of that court order, and some people may have it already, I don't know, but just to be sure, probably could have it here. I, I, this is the first I've heard about the CIC and no charter, non-charter communities not being part of that.
Yeah, and I'm, that was the first I heard of that as well.
And, and, and again, that may be one hundred percent correct, and we just don't know that, but I think it's important. I mean, I know she said state law seventeen twenty-four, and she refers to charter seven eight oh one, so I'm assuming you can probably find state law seventeen twenty-four online if the city doesn't have it.
Well, it needs to be. One seven two four decimal one zero, I was reading while she was saying it. One seven two four decimal one zero.
So, it'd be interesting to see that, I guess. Go ahead, Michael.
It says political designating community, urban corporations agency development. So, that's where she's referring, where it says it's designated by. But frankly, I'm not sure our job is to adjudicate whether we have proper legal status for a CIC or not. I mean, it's, it's good to hear it. Now, for the court order, that's more relevant to our authorities that empower us to do what we do. Everything else is a plusage. And I, I respect where she's coming from, but that's not, that's not for us to decide.
No, I don't disagree with it.
Just if you're interested, reading and understanding it.
But it's, it's one, yeah, one seven two four decimal one zero, that's, that's the ORC. And if you wanna get really technical, it's one seven two four decimal one zero, para large A, para one.
Well, thank you for that.
To go back to that point, the thirty-five feet, I thought, once we were all educated on that from the previous meeting, it came back, and I thought you had made a recommendation that if, if they needed something formal, we would have to come back and change plans and all that stuff, and they would accept it at thirty-five, knowing that there was a mistake on the website, they didn't have to redo their plans, and everybody going forward knew that it was thirty-five, correct?
I, I agree with that.
That's the way I remember it.
Well, we were only approving a site plan, we weren't approving.
See, the last thing is, even with our changing the building height, the footprint, the site plan, everything related to setbacks, parking, none of that changed. So really, is, is building height really not something that planning commission approves? I mean, yes, it's nice to know it forms, and with them, and I agree with you, David, is that was, what, that was kind of what was said and discussed, was that it was based, they had to come back to us, but the change, going between thirty-five and forty-five feet is not the requirement anyways, cause it wasn't the change in the site plan.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I, I was at the same age.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. And I don't know about the conditional use, if that's, that's something that we can look at, eleven fifty-one.
Whatever the law or I want to.
Well, here's the thing, so eleven fifty-one does not contain all of the conditional uses. There are numerous places in the, in the text that require a conditional use, but it's not, it's, eleven fifty-one doesn't reference it. You just have to know where they are.
Well, if you can share that with us, that would be awesome, cause I, I think you, you had mentioned it to me, that it was in the code. And if, that, from my understanding, if they wanted to increase the height, the conditional use is based on increased setback as you go up taller. And if that is correct, the way I understand it, is they can go to forty-five feet, they would have to increase their rear yard setback, which would mean the building would actually have to come closer to Old Mill, and it would still be within the allowable front yard setback. They wouldn't be approaching, it would just be making it move closer in order to make the rear setback comply with the conditional. So they're kind of cursing themselves, in my opinion, by, if the, if the conditional use permitted, uh, request works the way that I understand it, they can move the building further away from the rear yard to get the additional height, but the building doesn't be closer to Old Mill. And still be compliant with the front yard.
Correct. And, and if I'm, if I'm not mistaking, the nineteen eighty-nine code language that I believe that we're going back to now for the thirty-five feet does include the conditional use language.
We'll go above thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, for above.
I'm reducing the setback so long for annual. So I guess that's just something that would be good for me to understand.
I also would note that all of the buildings on cornerstone are not forty-five feet high. Some of them are thirty-seven. I, we just, they were all reviewed under that regulation that allowed for forty-five feet, but not all of them are forty-five feet.
Okay.
So there's nothing we are gonna do about that? Cornerstone's built out, it's, they're.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Beyond us at this.
And they're not gonna go cut them down, make them shorter, so what, it's just a mistake, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, and who knows what they, they as a community may choose to do because of that.
Yeah.
We'll have to see.
But on your drive home, watch out, because they're in the streets.
Stop.
I'm sorry.
Steve, where were we, David? I can't remember, where were we going around?
You were going this way.
You had anything else?
Nah, I just have to say it.
Michael, do you have any?
Watch out for people in the streets.
No, sir, and I'm willing to move to adjourn.
Well, we just need to hear from Lynn, what's on the agenda, in actuality.
I do it one thing. Do we have a meeting set for the eleventh of July?
We do not. There is no meeting in July. The next time we'll meet is in August, and we, I believe we will have a meeting.
What date's on August fifteenth?
I think we have August.
There's the fifteenth.
August fifteenth is currently.
Which, which I can't make.
I've got reserve orders for the fifteenth, so I'm just giving you a warning.
So, gentlemen, if you're.
Small party.
Yes.
So if we're gonna have a meeting, the applicant's gonna need to know if all three of us are here, they, what do they require?
Here's.
Right.
Forget it. Is it, is it all three, cause it's three out of the five?
Yeah.
Not two out of three?
No. And I, I believe we may have a couple conditional use requests, so those have a thirty-day public notice period, and so those would need to be posted by July fifteenth, so. Do, do three of us, do we have three?
Well, there are three of us that will need to, but I guess the applicant needs to know that they're gonna require three out, if you can.
Three out of three.
Three out of three, cause it's really probably five.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And so much is it allowed? If we have anything before, I will come with the membership here if I have thoughts on something for the three. But the fifteen, fifteen August, I've got two weeks of reserve training. This is a training in a classified environment that's hard to get into, so I want.
Lynn, as far as I can tell, I should be here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it outside.
Okay.
But, but, sir.
Well, I would expect Starbucks to possibly make that, since we have a break, but they'd be back on the fifteenth.
Anything else, Lynn?
I'll bring coffee.
Oh, nothing else?
All right, then, eight forty-five adjournment. Everybody have a good summer recess.